No, no.
Hi, gang. Hi, Bill and Susan.
Hi.
Good evening. Hello.
I've got the wrong host key. I will be right back.
What's that mean?
It means Sherry sent me another one.
Okay. Bye.
I have a lot of background noise. Is lacrosse over?
High school lacrosse is over. Club lacrosse is just starting this week.
All right.
Good timing.
Good. So your, your, your parental fandom continues.
Yes. Yeah, the girls lacrosse varsity lacrosse didn't make the tournament this year. So.
Rats.
Yeah.
Yeah. They sounded competitive as I read it.
Yeah, they were pretty competitive, but they're, yeah. I get my own thoughts, but it's, um. Yeah, they, I wish the coaching crew was a little bit more into, um. Getting them going.
Yeah.
The soft team, unfortunately.
Did you play growing up?
No, no, I only played girls lacrosse as a coach for like whatever seven, six or seven years. I don't even know how to use a guy's stick.
Oh, my gosh. All right.
Yeah. And now it's getting to the point where it's too scary to even play catch with my daughter.
All right. When did, um, when did she reject you as a coach?
Now, you, anything past eighth grade, it's not, I'm not qualified to coach that. But yeah, it was a lot of fun.
Yeah.
It was just a bunch of parents like coaching, you know, 48 girls from like, like second person, second grade up to eighth grade.
Yeah.
It was.
That is, that is fun.
It was good to see. One of them was a valedictorian of the high school class this year.
All right.
Molly Bernardo. It was good to to hear her. It was cool. Like after, um, the, all the awards they gave out to the high school students at the Galvin that, um, one Thursday night, a couple of weeks ago, it was cool because we went up to her after and I'm like, man, I can't believe I know you. Yeah, she's just won so many awards and different stuff. So it's, it's great to get to know all these athletes and kids.
Is your daughter a senior?
No, she's a junior this year, but the way the youth works, it's every other year you switch and you take the grade above the grade below. So it keeps alternating. So you get to see really three grades. So, um, we know a lot of the sophomores and the seniors, even though my daughter's a junior.
So you went to the awards night?
Yeah, my daughter received a book award.
As a junior?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
Wow, congratulations.
We didn't, we had no expectations. It was pretty cool.
Yeah.
That's interesting. Senior's award night.
It is, but they usually give out like eight to 10 book awards to juniors.
Oh.
Yeah, for the junior class. I think it, I'm just a little suspicious. I think it's the teachers that are like promoting it.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
It's not the administration.
Right.
Well, it's 7:01, so I'd like to, um, call us to order. Um, so with the, today's date is 6/13. Uh, just real quick roll call, uh, Bill Spalding.
Here.
Jim Hogan.
Here.
And I've made you co-host, um, Matt Lowry.
Here.
And Kevin York.
Here.
And, and myself here. So, um, we are here. Um, uh, Susan, thank you for circulating the May 23 minutes. Um, does anybody have any uh, questions, comments, or corrections to make to it? If not, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
In a second. And all in favor? Bill Spalding?
Yes.
Kevin York?
Yes.
All right. Uh, Jim Hogan?
Yes.
And Matt Lowry?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Uh, people keep coming in the meetings, so my, my screen's looking around. That's great. So, um, we've got, uh, a couple of minutes, uh, before we, uh, open our public hearing for 197 in the Han Street. Glad to see that, uh, um, representatives are here and, um, some of the neighbors as well. The other agenda items we will tackle will be, uh, an update, uh, the bylaw review committee and BTA communities and some other items. Aaron, it's nice to see you. Thanks for, thanks for joining. If there's, obviously if you have any updates, we'll, uh, receive those as well. The, um, so far we've been breaking down, um, uh, high school lacrosse, elementary school and high school lacrosse. Um, any other, uh, sports comments, any of the background people have? I was, um, the only, the only sphere I could manage was a soccer ball. Uh, you know, that anything smaller than that was, uh, I, I couldn't, I couldn't adjust my, my realm perception. That and the, that and the fact that you're arming young, young kids with, with weapons seems a little long. And we did have a useful conversation with the bylaw committee. All right, it is 7:05, so I'm very happy to call our public hearing to order for 197 the Han Street. Um, so picking up from where we left off. And, um, Aaron, um, do I know you had some communication and there, um, there are some updates regarding, uh, some recent conversations with and fire and, uh, the engineering department.
Yeah, I'll just keep my, yeah, I'll just keep my part short. So since our last meeting, uh, with having an applicant and his attorney and engineer here, um, I did coordinate a meeting between myself, um, and, uh, engineering, fire. Those are the folks that we have made questions for at the last meeting. Um, so they were able to kind of talk through some things, um, through that meeting. And I know, uh, Attorney Schumer can give you an update on where that stands, where the plan stands. Um, and then kind of progress moving forward and, um, kind of what was, um, decided from, from that internal meeting. So I will pass it on to them.
Great. Thank you very much. All right. We are not having, we're having an audio problem, Attorney Schumer.
Yeah, we can't hear you.
I have not.
How about, how about now? Is that, is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry about that, everybody. Uh, for the record, uh, my name is Attorney Jesse Schumer. I represent the applicant Andrew Dorney and his wife Renee. Uh, with us here tonight is Mr. Dorney and, uh, Civil Engineer of Record David Jordan of GPI. Uh, as Aaron mentioned, uh, we did have an opportunity to meet with Chief Sullivan and, uh, and Bill Renaud of DPW as well as Aaron. She was, uh, at the Zoom meeting, uh, yesterday. Uh, it was a, a good meeting. We, we went through all the issues that were noted in Chief Sullivan and, uh, and Bill's feedback letters to the board. Primarily, I think the, the chief's comments were, were addressed, but, but I'll leave it to David to go through, uh, the letters in, in greater detail. Uh, but Chief Sullivan primarily indicated to us that he wanted to ensure that the, the new house was adequately marked from the street so that his emergency vehicles could, could know, uh, where to stop and where to pull in for the, uh, to the house in the rear. Uh, he wanted to ensure that there was adequate, uh, room for his fire vehicles to maneuver the site and to, to turn around without having to back all the way out to Nahon Street. Uh, and, and Bill Renaud was going to, uh, provide us with a turnaround template to ensure that the fire operators can, can get through there. Um, and he also, uh, wanted the new street to have a, uh, a name, uh, it to be a named street, though he, he, he's okay with it being a private way. So I think the ball's in, uh, in, in our court and Mr. Dorney's court to, to figure out a good name for this road. Uh, but that, that'll of course be up to the board to determine. The, um, the, the engineering issues that we went through yesterday with, uh, with, uh, Mr. Renaud, they're, they're fairly technical and they have to do primarily with, uh, stormwater management. So I'll rely on David to, to go through those. But, uh, the comments were all, um, were all addressable, I think, and we're in the process of, of doing so. The purpose of the meeting was primarily to run through, uh, how, uh, David and his team were considering approaching the issues and the feedback that were, that were raised in the comment letters. And I think that we're on the same page with Mr. Renaud in terms of how to do so and, and, uh, and we'll continue to work with him. Um, with that, uh, Mr. Chair, if it, if it pleases the board, I'd like to, to hand over the mic to, to David to, uh, to go through the technical aspects of that. But I, I think our plan tonight was to provide just a brief update, not take up too much of the board member's time. Uh, and plan to come back at the board's next meeting, uh, later this month with a, a fully updated plan that's been vetted by Bill and, uh, Chief Sullivan.
Okay. All right. Yeah, Mr. Jordan?
Uh, yes. Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is David Jordan, engineer in Lance of Air with Raymond Peterson. Um, as Attorney Schumer just, uh, mentioned, we had a very good meeting with, uh, the chief, the fire chief yesterday as well as the, um, town engineer, Bill Reno. Let me start just by, I mean, I think Jess, Jesse gave you a pretty good update on where things stand with the fire chief. Uh, if the board recalls at the last meeting, he had issued a memo that basically suggested he preferred that this be a public roadway and not a private street. Um, and again, it really turns out the crux of that request is more from a, um, emergency response standpoint. He just wants to make sure that if a call comes in from either one of these houses, that the emergency responders know exactly where these, where these homes are located and not drive past them. Um, so that's where this idea of actually be leaving it as a private way, but name, giving it a, a name, um, so that it becomes more of a specific destination rather than just a, another street number along the Han Street. So he seemed, he, he said he was, you know, supportive of that approach. Um, and with that would be okay with it being remaining a private way. We discussed the location of the existing fire hydrants in the area. He was fine with that. And, um, as Attorney Schumer just mentioned, we did talk about the, uh, ability for a fire truck to turn around within the driveways that we're proposing on site. And we will be providing a fire truck turn plan to demonstrate that, uh, there, uh, the fire department's vehicles can in fact get into that site, get turned around and, and drive straight back out onto Nahon Street. You know, have to back onto Nahon Street, uh, which of course was a, you know, concern of his as well. So I think we left things in a very good place with, uh, Chief Sullivan yesterday. Um, moving on to the comments from the town engineer at the last meeting. He had issued a basically a three-page memo with a number of comments. Um, some were more just general, for information only comments, and others were requests for additional clarifications or revisions to address some concerns he had. And, uh, the majority of the items that, uh, he wanted us to provide further explanation on did in fact center around the stormwater management that we had, we are proposing for this project. So maybe I'll, I'll jump into those few comments he had first. And if I can share my screen, um, I can show the plan that was uh, discussed yesterday when we met with him. All right. So in Bill's memo, um, he, in terms of drainage comments, which is on this end of the second page and scrolling over to the third page of his memo. He questioned the stone, this, uh, stone infiltration trench, uh, that we had proposed along the edge of the, uh, shared driveway. Um, he noted that it's on a slope and was questioning whether or not it would be effective. Or if in fact, all that would happen would be that the water just run down towards the end of the trench and spill out over into Nahon Street. What we had proposed when we met with Bill yesterday was to actually increase the size of that trench, make it a little bit wider. And then put essentially a check dams inside of it. So, uh, clay barriers to prevent the water from just flowing freely down the full, full length of the trench. Essentially the water would get, you know, collected within each section, trapped within there and be allowed to infiltrate into the ground. Uh, Bill said that they have seen this and approved this in the past. Um, his only comment on it was, uh, a request to provide some pre-treatment to the water as it comes off the driveway before it comes into this stone trench. Um, so we worked up a, another plan subsequent to that meeting where we are looking at moving this trench um, a little bit further away from the driveway and to have some overland flow through, uh, the grass strip adjacent to the driveway, provide some pre-treatment before then enters the infiltration trench. Uh, so we, we had sent that off to, uh, Bill and to Tim today and just kind of waiting to get some feedback from them on that approach. Uh, but based on what we talked about yesterday, that seems like that would address that, that particular comment. In Bill's memo, he also, uh, questioned whether we met the groundwater separation requirements for the chamber infiltration system that we had proposed to infiltrate the roof runoff from the proposed house. And we did take a look at that. And while it looks like one of the chamber systems did meet or would, would meet the separation requirements, uh, the other infiltration system would likely not. So what we're proposing to do instead is to actually put a stone drip strip around the entire edge of the foundation. Uh, so again, the water coming off the roof, uh, will either be collected by downspouts and just be directed into the stone trench um, around the, around the, um, house foundation. Um, or just drip directly from the eaves into the stone trench and that'll allow for the infiltration of that stormwater. Bill had asked a question as to whether or not this would have a full basement. Um, likely it would. And in that case, what we would do is we put a waterproof membrane between the stone trench and the foundation to prevent water from, the water that's intending to be infiltrated into the soil from getting into the basement of the, of the, of the new home. The other thing we had talked about while not shown on this plan was other opportunities for providing additional stormwater infiltration on site. Um, and one thing we're looking at is potentially taking the parking area in front of the garage doors um, of the new house and the little parking area in front of, uh, Mr. Dorney's residence and actually making, uh, those, uh, either porous pavement or more likely pervious pavers. So it would be direct infiltration and treatment of the stormwater from those two areas. All of these measures combined, uh, they reduce the, um, uh, post-development peak flows to below the flows that occur from this project currently, from this property currently. It also reduces stormwater volumes. So again, with, with all of these measures in place, it would actually be less water eventually and making its way into the Han Street than happens out there today. I'm going back to Bill's.
Mr., Mr. Jordan, if, if you do have a second, um, just for a point of clarification, um, on the proposed alternate scheme. The intent in this case would be that the trench as envisioned on the plan shown for, um, the three feet wide with the clay, big clay, you know, the back dams. Yep. That would be installed day one, or would that continue to be proposed, uh, being done as part of the redevelopment for this site? And then subsequently similar, I'm assuming my assumption is similar to the previous, um, proposal that this would be done with the underground storage can, in lieu of the underground storage tanks. This would be a future design consideration that we would need to make sure it was incorporated in the design in the future as well as similarly the, the permeable pavers. That would be a now or a later construction.
So all of this would be a later construction. I mean, Andrew can chime in if, if I say something that's incorrect, but until such time as he either decides to move forward with building this house or, um, sells the house and it starts to be developed and, you know, in conjunction with the, uh, whatever the final approved plan is. At the time that this new driveway is installed, this new trench would be installed. And then at the time this house, or whatever house is built on this property is constructed, that's when obviously the stone, uh, drip strip would be installed and the porous pavers in front of the garage door. Uh, but to your point, uh, Mr. Hogan, yeah, I would anticipate any approval from this board would condition that, you know, that we acknowledge that this may not be the final house, but whatever house is built on, on this lot would in fact have to incorporate a, you know, a similar measure of stone around the foundation and, uh, porous, uh, driveway, pervious driveway uh, for the cars in front of the garage door.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification.
Yep, you're welcome. Um, just quickly, a couple more of the items under, under Bill's drainage comments. He asked us to expand our drainage report, uh, to include, uh, addressing the stormwater management standards, uh, which we can certainly do. Um, and then he had, uh, a couple more comments regarding our hydroCAD model, our, our stormwater model. Um, and that would all be addressed with these changes as well. So that essentially was all of his drainage comments. And the way we left it, uh, with Bill and yesterday was that, um, you know, as we go through and make further adjustments and tweaks to these plans and addressing his comments, we'll engage in a, you know, direct back and forth, uh, with Bill and Tim. Um, and include Aaron, of course, in those correspondence, uh, so that we can, you know, reach an agreed upon approach on how we're addressing his comments. Um, so that when we're back before this board, hopefully we can have something that's, uh, been fully vetted by Bill, um, at that, at that time. Bill did have another, uh, of other comments in his memo, uh, some general comments, uh, which again were more, um, primarily more blanket statements, uh, a couple of comments on the water. Uh, one again, just being a blanket statement. And then a discussion about a, you know, potential contribution, uh, to help, uh, with replacement of the water main in the Han Street, which I guess is, uh, in need of replacement. Um, then a couple of comments on the sewer, uh, fee for infiltration, info removal fee that would be paid. Another general comment. And he had a question as the board did on the sewer manhole, or what we were showing as a sewer manhole, which is in fact a sewer cleanout for the Dorney residence. So I think we addressed that. Um, so very quickly, Mr. Chairman, that's, uh, a summary of, of what was discussed yesterday. Um, I'd be happy to get into any more of those items in more detail. Uh, but rather than just, you know, continue on, um, I think, uh, I defer to uh, you and the board and any specific questions anyone may have. Thank you. And I can stop sharing if that's more helpful.
Um, just, uh, a little, little updating, um, my notes were that, uh, we were waiting for some other comments from the, uh, police and municipal light.
I have, um, police, I did, I included something. I'm sorry. I've had a number of projects on the hunt.
Yeah.
You haven't heard over the last month. And so, um.
Well, yeah, we can.
I can, I can, I'll look through my files, um. And then, uh, gas and light, I don't think I heard from them either, but so just give me a second.
Other members of the planning board, any, any comments about, um, uh, what we just heard? Any questions?
Yep. Theo, I do have a question. Um, thanks for the presentation, Mr. Jordan. I think it's, um, it's great to see you working with the engineer and, and Bill and making sure that the previous, um, pavers or whatever is going to be used for the driveway and then really trying to reduce the amount of runoff. What, did you discuss any type of maintenance, like how this would actually work if it was to get clogged? Or is there something, I know we've done this in the past where, um, we would make sure that in a subdivision such as this, we would make sure that it, it's listed on, um, maintenance. So, but did that come up at all?
Not specifically, but we will be addressing that. Um, when we address the stormwater management standards, which we are subject to through your stormwater bylaw, um, we do need to prepare an operation and maintenance plan, uh, which will address the maintenance of the, uh, pervious pavers and the infiltration trench and any other stormwater management practices on the property. Um, so that would be prepared and become part of, uh, the continued maintenance requirement for these two lots.
No, thanks.
Thank you.
So my only comment would be is, um, I, I guess I'll go along with the fire department, but I think it's a little overkill to name this this driveway or road, uh, considering there's already a couple of the houses that are set back there. There, I think adding a new road for one house is gonna make more confusion than just. In, you know, numbering these consecutively, but. Now, if that's what the fire department wants, then then that's fine. Um, I've been issued back from the truck out, I don't. Uh, again, I think that's a little bit overkill because they currently have to do that. The situation they have right now with this house and the two houses next door, which are both set back, but. Again, if, you know, that's what it takes, uh, get the. Fire department's approval, then then that's fine. Uh, truthfully, I prefer not to have another named road, an entire main road for one house, but. That's just my preference.
Thank you. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Bill. Um, Jim or Kevin?
I I would agree with what Matt just said. Um, my only question was was the question that um. Jim asked for clarification on earlier about if there would be phases, so that was something on my end.
Yeah, I agree.
I would additionally uh echo what Matt said as related to a named road. Um, and then the only other question, which I'm sure the chair was about to get into, would be clarification as it relates to when the next. Next time that the proponent would like to come in front of this board. Um, and what, just making sure that the timeline is so understanding. When we'd be able to receive the material so we could review in advance and have a productive conversation. Um, it'd be interesting to understand what that that timeline, what proposed timeline looks like.
Yeah. Uh, uh, yeah, uh, certainly, that's um. Yeah, so let's pick that up.
So I'm gonna, on that one, Mr. Chair, I'll defer to David on on how much time he needs to update the plans. I I would like to have them in the board's hands not less than a week before the hearing so that you all have a chance to review them. Um, and I think i- in response to to the comments tonight from uh Mr. Lowry, Mr. York, and Mr. Hogan. I I think I'd like to to consider when we when we go back to Chief Sullivan. Uh, letting him know that the board members did have some concern about naming that street and and floating some alternatives such as a. A a street sign or something at at the street level to to indicate the address of the house. Uh, I've seen that around town. There's a number of properties that are set back significantly from the street that have a have a little sign that looks like a street sign. Has the address and I I think the chief would be okay with that. He he's primarily, as as David mentioned, concerned about. Making sure the ambulance or the the fire engine doesn't drive past the driveway and have to have to back up. So, uh, I I think there's a solution for this i- in a way that that resolves the members' concerns as well as Chief Sullivan's. So I think we'll work on that. Um, so David, uh, without having been said, i- is it feasible for you to have a plan uh prepared for, uh? I guess it'd be about a week from now.
A week from now, yeah, I think that's what our our plan is. We would uh. Um, anticipate having a plan ready uh by next week so we could be back before you in two weeks.
Would that give um engineering and others adequate time to review and to give responses?
Um, well, Theo, by looking at the, if they get it to us next week, which is the twentieth is what you guys are saying, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, so we are not going to be meeting again. So, yeah, the twenty seventh, um. Yeah. I would like them internal departments to see what you've changed specifically um prior to going in front of. You guys again to see if any issues I brought up. Um, that should give us enough time, but I don't think I could get it to you. Get it to me quickly. Yeah, you guys, that's up to you, but. We can make it work. I guess it's up to you guys.
I mean, that 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 would be ideal, but I. Um, I mean, it really, yeah, it seems like a tough a tough spot. Um, uh, for you, uh, for internal departments to turn it around and then provide it to us on, you know, the twenty second. To give us a couple of days to review it.
Well, David, what you kind of showed us tonight, the plans will be more finalized. So, I mean, what you've sent along for Bill and them, so they've already gotten wind of it. So the more I think about it, it shouldn't be um too too tough unless there's any large changes, I guess.
Okay. Yeah, um, all right, then it looks like um. We'll uh we'll pick this up again on uh June twenty seventh uh at our at our next planning board meeting. The um, uh, will will there be a full uh drainage report? Um.
Yes.
Okay, all right, because that that was a big um, a big set of concerns. All right. Yeah, um. So that's that's certainly helpful. We're glad, um, I would agree with Jim, glad that you're making progress and uh able to have uh. Really constructive conversations. Um, we do want to open it up to um. Uh, the other uh town members on the on the call, so um Yusan or Danny and um. Love to hear.
Yeah, so this is Bushen here. So, uh, are we taking some of the comments, questions only related to drainage or more generic also?
Um, I think we'll we'll take drainage and uh more generic. For sure.
Okay, so on the, again, let me ask you the generic one, because in the last meeting, we discussed quite a few different topics. Including, uh, again, it's in, uh, uh, we asked whether the property can be. The 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 outline of the property can be looked to get moved a little more on the west side or on the. South side as one of the approaches uh we can look into. Uh, did that happen?
Not uh, not quite sure I follow.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Uh, I I remember at the end of the meeting last time, because there were quite a few concerns questioned with respect to. The propane tank I have very close to the property line, the the tree conservation we want to do. I believe, uh, Theo, you had recommended the uh out here that has to. Uh, Andrew and the team can look whether the plan can be shifted. That the construction plan as such can be shifted towards a little bit on the. No, sorry, south side or on the west side so that it becomes a little further away from the property lines. Was that looked into?
Can I add uh to that as well? Because I think I know exactly what he's referring to and it was, uh, I think it was proposed by Mr. Matt Lowry. Um, to potentially consider a variance to move the driveway. To the property line to a but the other, the neighbor's driveway. So essentially just allow them a very, potentially consider allowing them a variance, which would allow the property to move towards. West, west sided, I think.
Yeah, I I had floated the idea whether they wanted to um ask for a waiver. For to go from a forty foot to a thirty foot, which then would be able to pull dollars uh. Now, towards the west, so yes, that that's just of what I have have suggested.
Okay, no, I I do remember that conversation now. Um. So we, I did take a look at that. If I can share my screen screen again real quickly here. Let me switch to the other plan.
And when we come back, um, uh, Busan and Danny, uh, for the record, we need your uh your street address.
All right, so. The the idea was if we could essentially reduce what is right now a forty foot right of way that establishes this. Excuse me, uh, this right of way within which we have the shared driveway. If that was reduced, then maybe this house could get shifted a little further away from these two properties over here. We can't go down to thirty feet. Essentially, this shared driveway that we're proposing right here. Really can't go any further. Um, what is that, west? Um, and the reason is we are lining up with the existing curb cut cut on a Han Street. In addition, there's a utility pole right here. Uh, that we can't, you know, that's fixing the location of this driveway as well. So we really don't have any ability to move this any further um to the west. Um, and we only have less than five feet. Uh, maybe four or five feet between the edge of this driveway and the edge of the forty foot right of way. Um, so we really do not have much flexibility at all in terms of being able to move this over. I mean, maybe if the board wanted to uh grant a waiver to make this a little bit narrower, we could pick up a few more feet. I guess that would be at the discretion of the board as to whether or not that's something it's worth. Uh, further discussion and pursuing.
Mister Jordan, can I, just to clarify though, right? So the the comment was whether or not that you could change the billboard a lot, but. To be clear, the proposed single family dwelling footprint that is shown on the screen is not an actual, the actual. Final footprint per se. It it's going to be up to whoever picks up the development from. What is I understand, Mr. Dorney's intent to sell the property. So that that probably that finalized footprint of that building would have to be finalized at that time.
That's correct.
But that it's almost a maximum footprint, right?
It it really, it really is at this point, yes.
Okay. Right.
Okay, so again, as in, just for the record, my name is Bushen and I'm from Three Kathleen Drive, wait, wait. Uh, my second question is with respect to the stormwater. Uh, I I heard the comments given by the engineer and certainly they intend to to address those. I wanted to kind of have one discussion slash question around the stormwater around the houses, right? So around the house, again, as in the engineer certainly asked some questions and I see the updated plan where. Some of that water is gonna get collected into, I'm forgetting the name as to what it's called, but. That is gonna get closer towards the east, closer to my property. So my question is, can that drainage water retention, can that be moved a little bit on the. South side away from the property? Again, as in our fear or the question I certainly have is with respect to this construction coming in, will there be any water? Sipping into our properties, right, on the Kathleen Drive? So the question is more on that with respect to those drainage collection. Can that move a little more away from the property as such?
Uh, yes, so. The original plan that we had presented last month uh showed underground infiltration chambers. Between your property line and the new proposed house. Um, as I explained to the board earlier, we're actually removing those underground chambers. And putting an infiltration, uh, for lack of a better term, called an infiltration trench around the house foundation. So yes, that just that moved it uh further away from your property. Uh, which achieves what I think what you just spoke to is get that water that's being going into the ground. Get it further away from your property and that's what we're proposing to do.
Okay, no, okay, uh, that, thanks, I appreciate it. And the other question is with respect to the current driveway and the proposed driveway. Is that the same position where the driveway is just gonna get paved? Or the new driveway needs to be moved little left or right to the current driveway as such?
It is more or less in the same location. It's it's wider and a little bit to the west of what's there now, um, but not significantly.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Uh, hi, can I ask a question as well? Uh, I'm Danny in uh two oh one to hunt. Um, so I guess uh to piggyback on what uh you were speaking about earlier, that this is kind of just a proposed. Uh, outline of the house. So I I'm not very familiar with this process. This is my first time doing these uh calls. So I guess, does that mean that whatever we discuss here? Whoever buys the property will have another opportunity to discuss what type of property is going to be placed there? Or is that supposed to be established at this point in the process?
Uh, I think um what we will establish is the limits of of the site and the lot. And that's that's uh that will need to be written in uh to the plans um. So that any future owner will pull the plans and see, oh, this is, this is what I can do and where I can do it.
Okay, so like, oh, that's not the exact outline of what the new house is or will be, it can be. They think like the way it's proposed right now, if we allow it, that could be the outline of the house, this massive. You know, piece, um, so I guess, uh, because we hadn't discussed it again, I just wanted to like, I think Busha was talking about. If we didn't discuss it today, because it seemed like we were mostly discussing this new trench thing and driveway drainage. Um, are we still considering the things that we discussed previously, like the fence stuff, the. How close it is to the tree strip line, like it's right up against the tree? And, you know, like digging up the basement like they were discussing would just be, you know, destroying. Half the tree's roots at that point, right, right up, the way it's drawn at least. So, um, are 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 these things that we need, I guess, I don't know when we need to discuss this. Do I need to wait till the end of the process to 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 guess have someone draw it into the plans or take into consideration? Or is this something that, I guess, because it's not in, not drawn, I have to bring it up every time or something? I I just. Want an idea of how that would work.
I appreciate you mentioning it, David.
Yeah, we, um, I do recall that discussion from the last meeting. Um, I do have notes from that meeting. And we have actually requested our landscape uh people to. Uh, include in the landscape plan or in the landscaping that we proposed on the plan. Uh, the implementation of tree protection measures to protect those trees during construction. So that will be shown on the final plans uh that this board uh reviews and and hopefully approves. So that will be addressed on the plans.
And so that, right, that'll be something that we we pick up and look for uh at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you, yeah. I mean, is it, it's maybe it's the question, but is there like a. A guideline for how much tree protection there is, like as long as the tree's alive, that's that's going to be okay? Or is it, you know, we can damage so much of the tree, you know, take a couple of branches off and it's still alive, so it's good? Like, or is there some other measure?
Yeah, I'm deferring to our our landscape group which has that expertise. I certainly don't.
Will they be joining our calls or is that going to be? Um, like.
I will discuss it with them and be prepared to answer that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yes, of Bushen here, one more question. So we certainly discussed some more. Concerns slash questions in the last meeting with respect to privacy, with respect to the construction timing and all those things. So I'm pretty sure those were noted, but are you, how exactly will those get addressed as such?
Maybe I can try that one through you, Mr. Chair. I I think, you know, oh. As as has been mentioned a couple of times previously tonight and at the previous hearing. A a lot of the issues that we're talking about, the construction impacts, the privacy issues, this is, these are going to be issues that really aren't. Aren't aren't resolved necessarily in this hearing. This is a, this is a subdivision control hearing, which the purpose of which is to divide the parcel into into separate lots. And to make sure that there's adequate access to it for for vehicles and for utilities. But the the issue of construction impacts, you know, we're going to do our best to address that in the updated plans. With conditions like David is mentioning with the tree protection, that's a voluntary. Uh, effort that we're willing to 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 put in the plan, uh. And and we can, you know, we can, we can work with you in terms of moving forward with the construction of the parcel of of the property. But ultimately, that's that's an issue to be worked out with the with the with the contractors, with the building con- construction companies. Because ultimately, that's that's not going to be uh Mr. Dorney who does that work. That's going to be whoever purchases that lot. And and that could be, you know, potentially years in the future.
Okay, but the way I understood from the last meeting was. This is the meeting in which the the conditions can be set for. Set forth for the developer as such to understand. The conditions under which that building can be built as such, not. The conditions under which that building can be built as such, not that there will be another public hearing as such. So if that is true. What does the board think of some of these questions concerns? How should those be addressed then? Do board believe that as to some of these concerns be added into the overall? Kind of sign of. Conditionality or something which need to be managed offline? With the neighbors and the developer, how does the board think of that situation? Just I'm trying to understand the process as such out here, even like Danny, I'm I'm attending such kind of sessions for the first time.
Right, maybe I can address that, so at the end of this process. Planning board's gonna uh, render a decision. And there's gonna be conditions in that decision. Uh, a lot of those conditions are gonna be addressed on the plan that we work through. Um, so the limited work line, tree protection. Uh, the shape of the lot. Um, the drainage for the lot, that will all be outlined in our condition and on the plans. The exact location of the house, the exact size of the house. That is not up to the board to dictate, because that's a building issue, you deal with just land issues, not with building, so. There'll be a limited work line, there'll be tree protection, they'll know what they have to do for for drainage. They'll need to meet those. You know, drainage issues for for taking care of uh, stormwater runoff. Uh, as designed on the plan or better. But. The final design of the house where it's gonna go, how it faces, that's not up to us, that that's a building issue and. Um, that's something, there's specific things there, you'd need to address it with the actual contract and building the house at that time.
You know, I could, Mister Chairman. I mean, I'm not familiar specifically with. Uh, town of Wakefield ordinances, but normally. Things such as hours of construction and noise are regulated through other local ordinances. Um, so that's how that's administered.
Right, and um. I think uh, I would like to um. Uh, perhaps at the at the next meeting to be be able to uh, refer uh, Busan and and Danny. Uh, to the to those materials, just um, and those resources so that. Uh, you have a little more information, um, and uh, we'll. See what what we can do just in. In that regard, you know, and and to Matt's point, it doesn't seem like uh, we would be adding specific construction conditions, um. But for, but for, you know, things related to the road and drainage and the subdivision, but um. But yeah, we. Appreciate.
Theo, if uh, Bishan, if you go to uh, the town of Wakefield bylaws, I was actually just looking into this the other day, um. You go to uh, one fifty four dash six, it's construction hours and noise limits, it gives you a better idea of what that looks like, um. You know, when, but in regards to the building and stuff like Matt alluded to, that's really something that um. Would be through our public works, or the public works would be the hours and things like that, but the building would be through like the building department and things like that.
And can you just guide me, maybe separately I can send it to you, but what about the privacy thing? How exactly those can be addressed as such?
Uh, you know, I don't, I think, don't, I won't mark my words, but depending on the. Whoever purchases, you know, the land, um. You know, I would imagine, and maybe one of our members of our board can chime into this, had plans like that, um. Where the houses are actually being built as far as the definitive subdivision, I know the situation goes different. Um, I don't know if we can put any conditions in, uh, or they can. For that, uh, because we don't have an actual development there yet, so. I don't know if we can. Matt, if you or Bill, have you seen this in the past? I know you guys have been on the board for a while.
Well, I could chime in, in my experience, um, the the lots were, the houses were redeveloping, being developed at the same time or the subdivision it was being developed and. Was um, a builder involved, so we had more control. Um, I actually, Matt, and maybe you have, I don't remember a scenario, I was just looking through my notes and past uh, project subdivisions. Um, that we just left it as a subdivision and had any control over what was being built there later on.
Um, we're specifically barred from putting conditions on. Do any, you know, anything with the building, so that's that's taken out of. Our review process at all, again, it's the land. The the use of it, the the drainage on it, but that's it, you can't dictate. Size of, if this went through ZBA, then yes, they could do it, but it's just a planning board issue, they're not asking for any variances, they don't need any relief from zoning, so. We have no say in that.
Yeah, to just one more follow up on that, um, if um, as. We've discussed in this meeting, if. Um, Mister Dorni, the Dornis sell the piece of property and a couple of years from now it's being built on, but the the. New property owner that is going to to build, if they are looking at placing the home. In a footprint with um, they need a variance for a setback or something else they're doing, then it would go in front of the TBA. The zoning board of deals.
I think, um, hi Andrew Dorni here, I I think at one point Bushan had uh. Suggested additional trees. I am back of his house in between the new lot, um. So if that's possible to show on the plan, that might be helpful.
So actually, let me, before someone answers, let me ask you the question also, right, there are two trees which had shown on the lot. Between the proposed property line and my property line. Uh, can you, can someone address as to why those couple of trees were added? And if Andrew, you can also have someone answer some of your questions. As to what exactly can be the thoughts of those trees? But I certainly want to understand, there are two trees in that plan which have been added, literally along the property line, what was the intention of those?
Uh, my recollection is that back when we had a. Uh, preliminary hearing or conceptual discussion on this project a number of months ago. It was suggested by. I I thought it was one of the board members. Uh, to provide some screening between the proposed new house. And specifically, uh, your house, as it was the most direct. A butter, and that was the basis for the showing those two trees on the uh, plan.
Okay, okay, so it was almost for the same reason of privacy uh, concern as such. Okay, so is that something which? Can be expanded as a clause? Towards the construction or that again, it's something which will be just deferred to the. Constructor builder who will decide as to how to build it, again, I'm trying to understand the process.
I think what we're suggesting is that. We would be amenable to a condition whereby whoever builds on that property does provide plantings as shown on these plans. To provide a a buffer or some privacy.
Okay, perfect, thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, ask another question as well?
Sure.
Oh, thank you, so it's Danny again at uh, two one Nahan. Um, so uh, this is something actually that um, Mister Matt Laurie brought up last time as well about. Um, you know. Someone just coming in and putting up giant fences all along the front of Nahan Street and so like, is this something that we essentially discuss and then? We have either, you know, like uh, Mister David Jordan agree to that and draw it into or write it in saying? We won't be putting this, you know, we won't be, we won't allow someone just coming in, or do we just wait to the end where someone says? Um, like, is there a vote or something, it's like, oh yeah, should we allow them to just come and put a fence up in the front of everything? Or is it something that needs to be, I guess, discussed regularly or then drawn into plans?
Uh, I, we're gonna have that in a condition. We put it in on other jobs, but you know, you know, if there's a fence, it can set back a certain distance from the road to make. I'm looking to make sure that the. Uh, the view is you're going down the road now. This piece, and it's maintained, so it doesn't look like it's sending this. Rear yard aside there, it's gonna be made to, you know, to find out. And that will be an issue.
Thank you, so I, at this point, essentially then, uh, can I just assume that's kind of taken care of, uh, because you're um. You're gonna be working that into it then, so like, I just want to know, so I don't have to bring it up again. Yeah, we're gonna be talking about it too much.
No, what what you'll want to do is, you know, because everything in the end, when when we're writing our conditions. You know, just, it's always good to, you know, to pull this to our words in case, you know, it gets left out or something. And to bring up every meeting, but. And when we prepare the conditions, it's always good, if it's not there, to speak up, we're happy to. You know, correct any mistakes that we might make, so.
And just to note, for the record, myself and and Mister Jordan, we're we're taking notes. With respect to all of the feedback from from uh, from both of the neighbors who are here tonight as well as the members and. Uh, we, rest assured, we haven't forgotten about any of the points that were discussed last week, it's it's on our list, it's just we haven't. We haven't fully advanced the plans to the point where everything is addressed yet, so. Uh, be assured, uh, the neighbors, uh, that we're working on all this and and it'll be addressed in the the board's final decision and and or on the plans.
Wonderful, um, I I really do appreciate uh, Busan and Danny, um, all all of your questions and your continued participation and and certainly. Attorney Shomar, uh, Mister Jordan and uh, Mister Dorni, um, all of your willingness to work uh, uh, through all of this and such an easy. Um, fashion, so, um. The, so uh, I'm glad we're making progress and I'm glad uh, things uh. Uh, have uh. Are eminently uh, resolvable and um, we will pick all this up on the June twenty, June twenty seventh. And uh, we uh. Uh, thank everyone for the discussion tonight and um, we'll forward to seeing you um, in two weeks. So, right?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. The um. What's the agenda, all right? I've closed our agenda, um. Sorry. Um, by mistake, here is, all right, well, that was useful. Yeah. Item four is the bylaw review committee update, um. So, um. The Kevin or uh, uh, Bill, um, uh, do you have, do you wanna start, um? I s- I certainly can, um. The um. Uh, we reviewed, um, so uh, attorney Babrowski submitted the uh, a revised use table, a reorganized use table with. Uh, some uh, uh, additional definitions, I, you know, I think we all received it. Um, it was um. Uh, mostly a basic restructuring, but um, but it was really useful and uh, did a nice job of. Uh, putting similar uses together, um, so it really uh, made for a a. Uh, a much more readable and manageable uh, use table. Um, I do think that um. We are gonna want to edit it and send send some comments, um, I had a a number of. Kind of uh, formatting or sort of technical questions um, about his first draft and I did send them to. Uh, Dan Lieber, but um. Uh, I think, I think we we are gonna want to uh, cobble our comments together and submit them uh, to him as well, um, but he. Um, and uh, I think there there is opportunity to consider some potential new uses that we need to put into the use table. Um. And uh, there 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 were some, like, um, and he had, he had left out mobile homes and, you know, was gonna put them back. Um, into the right spot, so, um. So that that was uh, very straightforward and productive, um. Kevin or Bill, any, any other comments and?
I'll defer to Kevin since he's on the committee.
Yeah.
I could fill in some blanks, I was listening, I wasn't able to jump on, but I was able to um, listen to the whole meeting, thanks.
Yeah, mo- mobile homes were missing, there were a couple of other things that were. Miscategorized, um, I think it was a copy paste where some of the uh. The the categories got messed up, which he said he was gonna update and send a revised version out.
Yeah.
Uh, then he also had to uh, to zoning definitions, um, which he also shared prior to as well.
Yeah, and that, um. Yeah, um. Yeah, so I um, certainly invite everybody to um, you know, and will, you know. To to review it and uh, circulate any comments back to us, um. The Kevin, do you wanna um? Talk about sort of the, the the big ticket item uh, really was trying to come up with uh, some uh. Separate uh, review process to help manage uh, the flow of information and uh, and help manage some of, some of the. Some of the recommendations.
Yeah, I think it was Dan who proposed this, um, to form a subcommittee that consisted of. Uh, Dan is chair of bylaw review committee, the ZBA chair and the planning board chair. His three members and then two additional members who he proposed to be. Uh, um, the two people who were on bylaw review committee who are also members of either planning board or ZBA, um, there's a another person who's on the ZBA. Um, as well as myself who's on on planning board and bylaw review committee, we don't have another meeting until September. So Dan's proposal was to work through some of these zoning updates for attorney Babrowski over the summer. Um, during that kind of hiatus that we're taking as a committee, so that we can go back with. Um, more unified recommendations, um, that a smaller group could work through instead of the entirety of the bio review committee and. Whoever else from planning board and and ZBA are able to join those larger meetings.
Yeah, and that that seems workable, it seems, um. These would still technically be open meeting law, right?
Uh, if if I remember right, there was confusion around that, I I.
Yeah.
Had to check on that. I, right, though?
Uh, I, I I think, right, the issue or the. Um, since it's really just an advisory role to Babrowski, maybe not?
Yeah, attorney Mullen felt like. We may not need it for that purpose, because it's an advisory meeting, it's not um, not anything official. Being given that by law review committee would have to approve as a whole body still.
Yeah, um. The questions, comments, Matt, Jim, yeah.
Yeah, I think that that, having that subcommittee with uh, Chairperson Lieber. And the the relevant representation from the ZBA and the planning board seems to make a lot of sense. Um. However, I think the question I would have continues to be as it relates to. You know, how to identify the items that need to be decided in a matter of public policy. Uh, my understanding from the last time we had conversations with the with Chairperson Lieber was that. Attorney Babrowski was gonna be identifying all these based on the, the series of public. Um, you know, uh, meetings that have been incurred, you know, the third of which was the one with the use table. The last one will be in September, so I think my understanding is that after. That September meeting, Attorney Babrowski is gonna do his first pass. Based on the feedback he's heard and identify all the different elements that require. Uh, review approval direction from from the town members. And in that point, it makes a lot of sense to me that there would be, you know, whatever that board or subcommittee is. Would convene in order to determine, and you know, kind of, if there's two paths you could go down, an A or a B. That board will review it, come up with a direction, then communicate to Attorney Babrowski, go down path B. Or path A, whichever one was the decision. But I think that's, that makes a lot of sense and I would be highly supportive of, we could get to that outcome in order to have a clearly defined. Manner to to dictate that, and then obviously all feedback could be routed through that subcommittee. And then the other thing is, even if we don't necessarily have to have that, have that as an open meeting. Have that as an open meeting, still especially if the committee is going to be meeting via Zoom. I would highly encourage the committee to. Record it. You're going to be on Zoom anyway. It doesn't make any sense not to. And oppose those in the in the interest of transparency, even if it's not statutory requirement.
Yeah. That that makes sense. Um. Yeah, so um the subcommittee is just advisory and so um. Right, it's, you know, they're going to say, wow, path B looks better, and so Bobrovsky will follow that and bring it back uh. Um to the full uh bylaw review. Um. The I I think at that point, right, we're back, Jim, to your same point of uh. Uh who's adjudicating the 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 big public policy items? Um and uh. But I think that that's going to be us and it's going to uh happen both in our meetings and in. The the bylaw review committee. Um. So, you know, they'll they'll end up proposing, as Matt has said, uh proposing something to us formally and then then we will. Have to make the decisions, the you know, the final decisions at that point.
Well, I understand that. I still think having this subcommittee provide the guidance to turn it from Browski in terms of the the first pass is probably a good way to head off a lot of. Issues down the line.
Yeah, yeah, um one hundred percent agreement, for sure. The um and uh uh Kevin, you had volunteered uh. Uh for this subcommittee and that that really is fantastic and I I think it makes a hundred percent sense, so that'd be terrific. So, thank you very much.
Sure.
Yeah, so um I know that uh future items that. Bobrovsky is working on is bacon storefront by law. Um and um there will be planning future public discussion on. Sections one and ten that we saw two meetings ago that never had an opportunity to discuss about. Um and um. I I'm not sure what what else Bobrovsky is bringing on, you know, for the eighteenth of September. Um. We'll find out, right? Um, so, okay. Thank you very much, Kevin, and um and everyone. Um. The fifth item on the agenda is an update on MBTA communities. Um.
So I can take this one. So uh we had our uh last meeting of the MBTA uh committee working group. The at that working group, the couple of key decisions were made in terms of the the base proposal that the working group is working towards. Um in order to help finalize the modeling that Aaron and Arthur, their consultant Ezra from Mass Housing Partnership are uh executing. He's from the, he's being funded by the grant from Mass Housing Partnership. He's not with them specifically, but. So the the main thing is that the the working group determined that uh we felt as if it made sense as a baseline. For this overlay district to use the same dimensional restrictions and constraints. Uh as applicable for the mixed-use overlay district. So, for example, minimum lot size of thousand square feet. Some of the restrictions as it relates to setbacks, the restrictions as it relates to minimum amount of open space. Minimum uh or say maximum lock coverage, those things. Intent that working group decided was to essentially take most of those items, copy paste. In order to allow uh consistency of those two overlay districts. In order to um fa- finalize the ability to model it. Additionally, the other um. Decision that was made from a modeling perspective was to proceed with uh one and a half parking spaces per dwelling unit. In order to uh be materially consistent with what's in our bylaw. The bylaw currently is one and a half for all units that are one or two beds. There is a um an increase for three beds. To two, but the decision was made to make it one and a half for the overlay district for the purposes of consistency. With the modeling as well as just it felt like that it would these were more likely than not to deliver three bedroom units. Or sorry, one and two bedroom units in lieu of the three beds that that would be applicable to anyway. Um just so um as a reminder, in case members of the board may have forgotten, the. Current thought line of thinking from the working group is to utilize a district in and around Wakefield Junction. As the sole manner of compliance with the state. Um what I've done is I pulled up on the screen. This is literally the map that we were looking at uh at the last working group meeting. You can see in the. Orange, red. Um kind of gray section, green and brown. Those are the different sections. That we are are utilizing to cobble together this proposed overlay district. You can see a couple of the markings that we made. Where there were conversations as it relates to losing some of the the lots. By the playground over by the multi playground, a couple of one-off lots that didn't seem to be very helpful in terms of. Or or consistency perspective. Kind of squaring off a couple of these proposed districts to make them a little more rational. So I know Aaron and Ezra are in the process of updating the model. And rerunning the numbers to ensure that this proposed district would be compliant. I think. My I would underwrite it that the working group is likely going to be proceeding on the basis of this as the initial. Proposed map and then starting to prom- promulgate that as we finish the rest of the the, you know, baseline by law. Initial proposal. We'll obviously be soliciting lots of feedback from different members of the planning board. As well as all of the other relevant towns and bodies uh as we get from the kind of post summer. In through spring of town meeting. Obviously, as you can see, this is not finalized work, but this this is the current line of thinking. For information purposes for the board and any other members of the public who may be interested in getting an update in terms of the current line of thinking. The meeting, uh as I understand it, is has not been posted in terms of the video of the meeting and the deliberations, but it will be. In the short term uh on the MBT working group website. Um so once that goes up, you know, anyone can go look at. And see how some of these conversations came came into being. All the meetings, one, two, and three haven't uploaded at this time. Uh so I think the the to do from our perspective is to finalize these districts. Make sure that everyone uh reviews it, nods their head yes, and then starts writing some of the language associated with how we're going to define this, these maps. In practicality and then uh start the actual language that's going to be included within. The body of the proposed bylaw itself, business and back and forth as it relates to what the right baseline. Whether we take the mixed-use overlay district or a sample uh by law from the state. So that's the conversation that's going to be coming in the future. Um additionally, uh for folks' information. When we get past this, um when we get past this for the compliance only. There was some interest from the uh MBTA working group as it relates to potentially another. Uh zone or two specifically around Greenwood Station. That was, there was an interest in having an overlay district around Greenwood as part of this effort. That did not help us from a compliance perspective with the state due to the large sizes of lots. It ended up. Messing up one of the density calculations or the densities around Greenwood and being significantly lower. Unless you had significantly higher than what we thought appropriate development as of right. Five, six, seven, eight units, you have to have as of right around Greenwood in order to meet the density requirements based on the lots that are currently. They'll be there. So the one of the things that the working group um was talked about and there was a lot of debate whether or not. It was appropriate based on our our guidance or purview is whether or not. The idea of having a separate. District that would be rolled into this proposed overlay district, but would not. Be submit the state for compliance. Entertaining that and working on that as a working group would be appropriate, or if other boards and um. Other boards within town felt that exceeded the mandate, for lack of a better term, to the working group. You know, there was some interest from the working group of including that as part of the compliance model. It doesn't look like it's going to work from a technical level for some state mandated density reasons. But I wanted to reach out to this group. You know, it's something that the working group thought made made sense with spirit of the law. Um but the working group did not want to proceed with, you know, coming up with a proposal. For a overlay district. We're only going to submit a portion of it to the state. We have this other portion that I would call discretionary in nature. Um so there was a little bit of attention back and forth with the group, so I wanted to to. You know, start and have a conversation with members of the planning board, um seeing as that this is, you know, one of the. This working group was convened by us, you know, at our behest and to see if folks. Had an initial thought in terms of if we have a section that's included for compliance of the MBTA communities law. And then this other discretionary component that. You know, is not necessarily strictly required for compliance with the state mandate. If that's something that they we feel as if we should be putting on hold or if we think that's appropriate, if we has this. This working group convened to proceed with some of that work and then roll it into this. So. I'd love to to pause and see if anyone has any feedback and then um based on that, we can kind of guide the conversation.
I'd like to say I appreciate the amount of work that's gone into this as a subcommittee. And I'm I'm really interested in the definitions. I know we talked about what a multifamily actually is. As a definition was like less than four um separate units. Um. It would be great as we get through. I I'm really excited about how we develop this. So what did the subcommittee? I guess I that would be jumping ahead too much.
Do you mind if I pause you there for a second, Bill? I I heard I heard a question. I think I can answer it. So. Right now, as it relates to multifamily as of right in this overlay district. The working group has determined that we can reach compliance with the state based on a three-story max. Four units as of right. So right now, we believe that that will allow with the district that's being presented on the screen for us to comply with the with what the state is is. You know, allowing or mandating. If we wanted to go to the Greenwood sec- set site, based on some of the the minimum densities that are being required and the lots that it currently exist, you can only take the lots as currently existing. You would have to allow five, six, or potentially seven, depending on which lots you include. In order to reach that as minimum density requirements, which would likely mean that we'd have to reevaluate the the. Maximum number of stories in order from a practical perspective. I don't know if that answers your question, but that's kind of some of the current line of thinking.
It does, and I was thinking about um. A project that was on the corner. Maybe about two years ago, it it completed on the corner of Chestnut and Cedar, where I believe it went three stories and it is four units. And Matt, you might remember the layout. It was like really tricky, like a puzzle piece that the architect put together to make that work. I was trying to remember if that was four units, but thinking about, but I mean, that that size does fit in a neighborhood setting and it is. Looking at it, you know, it's just, it's just, um, yeah, it is inside the orange. The corner of Cedar and Chestnut. In fact, what's that's walnut, next one over is cedar. Yeah, so it's it's just, it's still, it's still in that orange.
Yeah, I think I know exactly the house you're talking about, Bill, because we keep presenting it as and uh. One of the, one of the ones that actually uh is a representative of what the density will be looking at. And that one comes out at approximately, it's a thing, it's like seventeen units per acre. I'm just pulling it up. You're talking about this.
Yeah, well, that's what I meant is that might be jumping a little too far ahead.
Can you actually see what I just pulled up on the screen?
Yeah, I think that is it.
Yep.
Yeah.
So it's three units for to to answer your question.
Oh, so you are using this one as an example. That's really funny. Okay.
Yeah.
That was part of it. Okay, that's so I'm not dreaming. I did see this before.
Yeah.
All right, thanks.
So with the, you know, taking step back, Bill, so do you, you know, I I think I heard you, you were asking some questions in terms of density. If that working group were to, you know, have the compliance component around Wakefield Junction. And we're evaluating another section that would be, I would call it discretionary in nature on Greenwood. Is that something that you view would view as outside of the the mandate or would you view something that as, you know, it was. Part of the evaluation consideration and that you think it would be appropriate um for the working group to evaluate, or do you think that it would be something we'd want to do as a separate effort?
Um that that's what I meant by maybe it's jumping ahead too far and thinking of what the subcommittee um. Yeah, I I don't know. I I think it is within.
Is is the purpose of that discretionary overlay district? Since since it's not required for compliance, is it? Focused on equity within the town so that the additional housing isn't all situated in one area? Is that what you're thinking with the subcommittee?
I think that's one of the main drivers. I also think that from this the subcommittee, the a number of members have also expressed that they thought that. A little that a little greater density from the housing perspective in the area around Greenwood. As of right might be if we're talking about locations within the town that we think. Additional density would be a a benefit and help drive some vitality of a of a downtown area. Around Greenwood and around those transit options, both the commuter rail, but also the buses have been identified. Is that would be a a smarter place for us to have, you know, a potential um gentle increase in density. But also not overwhelm the neighborhood character of the area, you know, off of the the side of Greenwood. So it's kind of a of an equity and then also a, you know, just making so it's not the entirety of the. Of the compliance is falling on Wakefield Junction, but also. Trying to be smart and and proactive in terms of if we wanted some additional housing units delivered, where in the town we'd want them.
So, but because of the Greenwood larger sought lots, uh these might be slightly. We would, they wouldn't, they wouldn't, we wouldn't have the same density requirements as the district above.
So I think what if if what the working group has is evaluated is we have the lots here that would be. The three stories maximum, four, four units on each lot as of right.
Yeah.
And the the conversation's been basically take that and copy paste it for Greenwood. However. With with the caveat being that if the Greenwood is something that we're adding as a discretionary, not for state compliance. We can do whatever we want as a as a community, right? And so the that's why some of the questions came up is, is this the right mechanism to be doing this? Is this something that we want to do an overlay via some other mechanism through the town? You know, I think there's some good pluses and minuses as it relates to, you know, why you might want to just. Package, you know, have that one conversation once. So you're doing one overlay, you submit the section to the state for compliance with three A. You have another section that you're doing for an from an equity within the town perspective. You have one set of conversations instead of doing one. Pause. Another one, you know, some other time, and then people are are confused on why you're kind of doing it from a hodgepodge perspective.
Yeah. I like doing it all in one. I I um. Uh I know it risks. Well, it, you know, it increases the conversation, um but I I also think um. I think it it increases the positivity of the conversation because uh it allows. Uh people to be thinking uh broader um about about the town and. Uh managing, you know, planning for and managing future growth. Um. Uh so I, you know, I also think it helps moderate uh complaints that were just, you know, uh. I don't know, doing, you know, treating some property owners differently than others in the town. Um.
And one other thing I just do want to just clarify for folks is that, you know, even if we did go with the separate discretionary zone. I don't think that there's clarity with regards to what's the best approach. I think that there's a mixed uh. I think there's some differences of opinion. If if you, I think that where folks seem to be leaning is. You would potentially go to the town meeting with one warrant that would just be for compliance. And then one warrant that would just be for, uh you know, this discretionary added section. But I don't think that's a decision that's been made, and frankly, I think that we would look to further engagement between. Town staff and the planning board, you know, it's as that part, you know, but the working group wanted to see if. People felt that was inappropriate for us to even be looking at a separate discretionary section before we continued those conversations.
Um I can chime in a little bit. I was one of the people that. Pushed for the equitable portion of it to come to Greenwood. Uh to comply with the spirit, which is to put housing around. uh to comply with the spirit, which is to put housing around mid-rail and transit-oriented uh sections. Um. It it obviously didn't work out the best for our model, but that doesn't mean it should just be completely disregarded, which is why, you know, I pushed to keep it in. Um, one thing people really need to to realize that if you're a property owner down there uh and this gets passed, it basically increases the value of your property instantly. So um more people that potentially could be included with this are, you know, it's bringing benefit to people. So I know other people are going to see it as a negative, but um, as a selling point, it increases the value because this land that might be, you know, tucked away by a train station and that people are complaining, oh, it's too loud. Well, you can put some housing in there and your your land value goes up. So this is one of the selling points um of why people would need to consider this, not just, you know, blow it off out of hand. So in this, so this is something that we need to sell. There are some, you know, there are some parcels that right along the railroad tracks that are unutilized right now. Um, putting some housing in there is is not a bad idea. So that that was the the intention of including this outside of just what's required by this stuff.
Because it's in the spirit of why the subcommittee was formed, I feel like it's not that much of a reach to include the discretionary overlay district. It also shows proactivity um planning ahead so that it it's not something that in the future we hopefully would not be forced to do again, but we're planning ahead for that years from now. Um, and the the other reason I think it may be good is, you know, but it could be a difficult conversation for a lot of people in town and and you're just pulling the bandaid off once instead of having separate conversations to then come back and try to do a similar thing in the future.
So I I think what I'm hearing, and if if people disagree, then please let me know. I think what I'm hearing is the planning board, while not commenting specifically on any of the districts, conceptually thinks that what is being presented is appropriate from a compliance perspective and conceptually thinks that the I concept of having a second discretionary zone, again, a a approval on town warrant, conversations aside, but just the idea of having a second, second discretionary uh zone is appropriate and fulfills kind of the intent of what the, why the working working group was convened. If if members of planning board agree, you know, I'll bring this feedback back to the working group and then depending on, you know, other feedback we receive from town council, environmental sustainability, ZBA, et cetera, you know, potentially you may see that we'll have kind of a compliance zone and a discretionary zone um as part of this initial. And then I'm sure that everyone here will have plenty of time to review and comment on specific parcels that are included or not included. Uh, I do know that there are a number of things that we're evaluating in terms of how to make sure that our commercial corridors are not impacted, as you may see along Main, North and Albion. We're we're trying to find ways that we're going to exclude parcels that front those, so our commercial quarters don't become as of right multifamily housing with no commercial component. So we're looking at some creative ways in order to do that, but uh, you know, obviously members of this board are going to be included in that process at, once that draft gets gets issued later this this year.
Fantastic. Um, yeah. I, you know, it's already been said, but I really uh appreciate all the all the work that uh Jim, you and that and Aaron and uh and others really are investing and moving this forward. So thank you.
Thank you for for taking the time and giving us the direction and obviously more to come, but you know, big shout out to all the members of the working group, you know, and then especially Aaron for helping to crow all of us. You know, sometimes it's probably not as easy as uh as it could be, but thank you.
Fantastic. Um, uh, item six, uh, items uh not anticipated by the chair. Um. Uh, I'll uh open it up to to all of you. Um, I have nothing. Well, I have one thing, but I uh will come back to that. Anyone else?
Okay, just just a quick add. The farmers market starts this weekend. Um, and Safe Streets will be sponsoring a bike ballet. So if you can get the word out, there'll be a bike ballet, so you can leave your car at home, stroll down, roll down.
All right, um, that's really neat. All right, um. So. Um, I wore my Safe Streets T-shirt the other day, just so you know. Um, the um, uh I'm gonna, I'm gonna sort of uh I I want to work a little bit on a calendar and be able to circulate that around. Um. Uh, Jim got it started by trying to plan ahead for uh MBTA communities and Jim and Aaron. So um, I kind of want to think about how we fit other things into it and it it really would be um pretty broad in general, but just trying to chart some of some of our path on uh a a couple of things. So um. You know, I'll be trying to circulate that as well. Um, and um. There's nothing else, I think. Uh, um, I think we're ready to adjourn. Yeah, Bill?
May I make a motion to adjourn?
All right. Thank you. Any seconds?
Second.
All right. Thank you, Kevin. Uh, all right. All in favor? Uh, Kevin?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Uh, Bill?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So thank you all very much and um. Yeah, see you at the farmers market.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Bye.
But thanks, Susan.